To bring to order the Mayfart Special Meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Palatier.
No call.
No call. Councilor Caesar?
Present.
Councilor Perry?
Present.
Councilor Mello?
Present.
Councilor Lambert?
Present.
Councilor DiMediris?
Present.
Councilor Shabbett?
Present.
Councilor Palatier?
Yes ma'am.
All present.
Madam President, I move that we take item number three out of order, just switch the two items, presentation in front of IAFF contract ratification because our attorney will be late this evening.
Do I have a second? Second. Muches be made in second, there are those in favor.
Thank you.
There'll be a presentation by Johnny Taylor Jr., Chairman of the Twin River Worldwide Holdings Incorporated. I'd like to make it clear, this is the first time the town council as a whole has heard this presentation. I invited Mr. Taylor here to tell us and opened it up to the public. It will not be a public meeting because this is the first time we are hearing of this and I will allow the council to ask Mr. Taylor questions. There'll be several public hearings within now and the November 2016 election. Mr. Taylor, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you all for the opportunity to present to you or to discuss with you this evening our concept. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce the team from Twin River that I have joining me this evening over in that second row. Joe Moore, who is the General Manager of Newport Grand is here this evening. Craig Skoulos, who is the General Manager of Twin River Casino in Lincoln is with us this evening. Glenn Carlin, who is our CFO, is here this evening. And Kim Ward, who's our Director of Community Relations, is joining me. Before I get into the formal part of the conversation that I want to have, I want to tell you a little bit about Twin River Management Group. I think you're all aware that we own and operate the Twin River Casino in Lincoln, Rhode Island, which is the seventh or eighth largest casino in America. We also own the Hard Rock Casino and operate the Hard Rock Casino in Biloxi, Mississippi. And we own a horse racetrack in Denver, Colorado, along with 13 off-track betting licenses. So why are we here? We're here to discuss a concept or an idea that we have to move a gaming license to Tiverton. And we think it's an idea that has merits, that merits consideration, and here is why. First and foremost, from a competitive perspective, there's been a lot of conversation in the region of late, but there are competitive considerations that we would like for the town to consider in terms of what it means, what a license means to Rhode Island. Currently, we're the third-largest source of revenue to the state, more than $300 million a year. The Twin River Casino has an economic impact to the state of Rhode Island of more than $250 million a year. We employ 1,600 people at Twin River, and when we acquired Newport Grand in June, they have another 160 employees there. And the impact of gaming in Massachusetts without considering the new southeastern casino, which they're in the process of bidding, is going to be approximately 35 percent. So the backdrop from a competitive perspective is pretty known and clear to us. So why Tiverton? Why did we come here? So we, first and foremost, looked for a location with easy access to a highway where people could get in and out quickly and easily with minimal impact to the local community. We also looked for an area where we could access a majority of Newport Grand's customers. And in the case of Newport Grand, the vast majority of their customers come from southeastern Massachusetts, which led us to Tiverton. The location that we have selected, and to be clear, we have secured the rights to 45 acres diagonally across Route 24 from where Foxwoods had plans to build a $500 million destination casino a while back. The location is 400 feet from the Mass border, where, as I mentioned, impact will be isolated from the rest of the town and steps can be taken to mitigate any traffic issues. The land, 45 acres, is currently undeveloped in the highway commercial zoning area of the town. We have done preliminary site work and we are confident that we understand how to address any concerns that may arise related to the environment and traffic. From a benefits perspective, the proposal will broaden the tax base in the town to include substantial non-residential tax revenue. Based on a minimal gaming program, it would be approximately 10 percent of the town's budget or $4 million per year. In addition, the project will create significant jobs between 350 and 400. While we plan to bring the existing 116 Newport Grand employees with us, we commit to the first job fair being hosted for Tiverton residents to create a pool of candidates to fill the remainder of the jobs. Tonight, we're here with a clean slate. You'll find no pictures or list of amenities to be included in a gaming facility. We really sincerely want to get the community input to create a plan that might work for this town. Again, no preconceived notions on look, feel, size, amenities, with one caveat: we will not be proposing to build a $500 million destination casino in the town of Tiverton. We want to work with the town directly to develop a program that it potentially could accept. We want to use this process that we will outline in a minute to help the town to get to know us as a company and as individuals, but also to see what you like about a proposal and what concerns you may have. We hope this process can build a foundation of trust from which to build. We have done much the same in the town of Lincoln. We believe this market can support around 1,100 slot machines and about 30 table games. This will all be confirmed when we present our feasibility studies later in the process. Everything else is subject to what we learn from our conversations with the town. Based on feedback, we will develop options and present them to the town council to gauge its reactions. We will then refine those concepts and come back with a definitive program with appropriate feasibility studies to support the market, traffic, and environmental engineering of that program. So our approach for you to consider is as follows. We are planning 40 to 50 small resident gatherings now through the summer to seek direct community advice and feedback, and we've already begun to line those up. In September, based on that initial feedback received through the summer, we will conduct three to four public charrettes or workshops where things like design, traffic, and environmental issues are considered. Based on those charrettes, we will prepare multiple design options, including amenities, for review with the council in the October timeframe. In November, we would review the final plan, including our feasibility studies with the town council, prior to requesting any action from the council to put the question on the ballot. Finally, given our experiences in Lincoln, we believe it might be helpful if you invited the Lincoln Town officials to meet with the Tiverton Town Council to understand Lincoln's relationship with Twin River, which is a good analog from many perspectives. That concludes my formal part of the conversation, and I'm open for questions and answers.
The last time we spoke, I asked you to contact the DOT because there is a roundabout that's in the process of being put there. There's a very bad traffic area as it is, and my concern was the traffic going into the casino. Have you contacted the DOT as of now?
So our engineers have, as I understand it, our engineers have contacted the DOT. Following our conversation, we engaged the engineering firm with a number of studies to be completed, one of which was traffic.
And the entrance would be right after the fruit stand, is that correct, in that area?
Again, subject to design, which, you know, I really, if any of you have been to our property in Lincoln, you know that we have a roundabout there, which has worked quite well for us. But we want to be part of the solution to help fix issues that exist with traffic in that part of the town and believe that we could be.
Any questions from the council? Councilman Caesar?
Good evening. A lot of the concern I'm hearing is the amount of police and fire calls that we'll be having to attend for this facility. I personally don't have this belief because I worked construction in Newport for 25 years and I've used to go to Newport Grand when it was highline, and I've never seen traffic problems or police problems. But I would like to see from the owner of Newport Grand, if possible, a list of any calls that were made to his facility for fire and police over the last several years. I'm sure it's public information for the police department, but that would be something I think that would help ease people's fears. I personally, like I say, spent a lot of time in Newport, belong to a club right down the road on Carnell Highway. Now Friday and Saturday nights have passed past that place frequently, and I do when, as you said, I see many Massachusetts cars there. So I think your analysis is correct. And that was also looked at when they were trying to put that crazy toll on our bridge here. So I think people are concerned about that, and I think you really need to, you know, bring some information forward as to how many police calls and ambulance calls there actually have been to that facility. She talked about the roundabout, and I think that's a necessity that needs to go forward before any project could be opened there. I live 300 yards from where you're proposing this. I go through the intersection every day. And it's not the intersection, it's the way people drive, but unfortunately, you know, we can't put a governor on everybody's car, I guess. The only other thing, as far as police to that, if there were calls to that facility, is it possible that the state police could handle calls to that facility? It is potentially a quasi-state facility. I'm wondering if it would actually need to be a burden. I can understand fire, the state doesn't have a fire department or anything, but if somebody falls, you know, you need an ambulance, I understand that. But as far as police protection to that facility, I was wondering if it was feasible for the state police to handle calls and be part of security there, because I think people have a lot of confidence in our state police. The only other thing was my own personal preference of what I'd like to see that facility look like as I drive down 24. I'd like to see something that looks like an old textile mill, something that fits in. You're driving to Far River, you see the mills, the old block. I don't think you could construct it out of the huge block they did back in the day, but I know that modern design can make it, you know, look. That's something in my personal opinion. I know you got a lot of charrettes coming up, but I just wanted to float that idea right off, that I think it would look great if it looked like an old textile mill, would fit into the area. And that was all I had, thank you.
Would you like to answer the police questions?
Yes, please. So today, at our property, from a police perspective, there are a number of things that happen. First of all, we have just under 100 security and surveillance employees on staff. All of our security, all of our security team are either existing or former law enforcement, so they're trained out of the police academy. On a 24/7 basis, we at our cost put a police detail on property. So that 24/7, there's someone from the police department there. At peak times, we have multiple people. In addition to that, the Rhode Island Lottery has investigators on property 24/7, and the State Police Gaming Enforcement Unit also has a presence on property regularly. You know, I will let the town of Lincoln's numbers, because they do have the numbers that you're looking for. I can't speak to Newport, we don't own that yet, but I can speak to the town of Lincoln's numbers, and I think that you'd find the results to be interesting and favorable in terms of the number of police calls, given how much of what happens on property we're able to handle ourselves, and we would run any facility in Tiverton much the same way. But I know those stats exist, and I know they can be, I'm pretty sure the town would make them available to you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Mr. Limber? Mr. Perry?
Might as well, we're here. Sorry, this is a new microphone system. We're not used to such high-quality technology. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming here. And thank you, Mr. Taylor, for your presentation.
I just have a quick question, and maybe we'll start talking again. You said, and this is not a direct quote, but as close as I could remember, that you wanted to present a plan to the town of Tiverton that was, that might be acceptable or might be appropriate. Is that accurate?
Yes.
What happens if it's not?
Well, you all have the ability to decide whether it's appropriate to put on the ballot or not. So you're the first level of governor of what I bring or my team brings back is acceptable or warrants voter consideration. And then ultimately, this is an issue that can only be decided by the voters of your town and the voters of the state of Rhode Island.
So what does that look like in, ultimately, when you come to the town council and formally request a vote from us to either place it on the ballot for, we're talking about November 2016 presumably?
Yes.
To put it on the ballot or not? At what stage of the process will you, you'll have schematics presumably, you'll have a pro forma, you'll have some...
Size, scope, amenity set, what does it include? Revenue projections of what it means, what it means to the town from a revenue perspective, definitively, feasibility, you know, how would the traffic issues be mitigated? Are they mitigated? How are we dealing with environmental issues that may come up? All of that would be presented back with this definitive program.
Okay. And what is the structure of the economic benefit? We're used to talking in numbers of, you know, real property assessments, that's how we generate our revenue, typically, the majority of our revenue, certainly. This number of $4 million has been kind of floated around as a sort of baseline threshold. What does that, where does that number come from? Is that property value or is that a second stream of non-property generating?
It's a combination of property, gaming tax, the town share for slot machines and table games, as well as food and beverage tax.
Here's a hypothetical, and I apologize for presenting it because I hate hypotheticals, but one presented to me, but out of, between the time we get from now to, say, September, I think is the timeline, you roughly said is when you'll have those, at least preliminary conclusions. Is there an effort to, I know you said you've got 45 acres under an option or something. Is there any additional property that would be necessary depending on the result of your scope and scale exercises?
So not, not based on scale or scope or anything like that? There may be discussions around secondary ingress and egress that need to be resolved. I'm not sure there are, but there may be, and if there are, that would probably be the only additional land that we would need.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's my understanding that you really wouldn't be able at this point to answer any questions relating to detail. I'll give you an example. I suggested to somebody, my goodness, they could actually get to this site with a road from Fall River, just that road between Tedeschi's and the houses behind Tedeschi's. And the answer I received was, oh, we've discussed that with them, and they had really no detail at that point. Thus, now, I'm not a criticism, I'm just saying, I don't want to ask any detailed-type questions like that. I don't want to ask whether you're going to have one floor or two floors, how many parking lots, and so on. But here's one question that really fascinates me, and I think you have to have given this some thought. You're going to be 380 feet from Fall River. Is that your understanding, 380 feet?
Correct.
I guess it's broken down into two parts. The first part of the question is, have you, have you considered moving to Harbor Mall in Fall River? I just raise that as a question.
No, we haven't considered that. We're actually, as an organization, we're procluding from doing business in the Commonwealth.
And what you're involved with is a transfer of license, that is, you want to transfer from one location in Newport to a location in Tiverton. It would require a whole different process of application through Boston in order to get a destination casino, because as I understand it, Massachusetts at this point is only dealing in destination casinos.
Correct. And in addition to probably not being able to do that, we don't believe that there is a market for a $500 million destination casino in the southeastern Massachusetts zone.
And you've led to my second question. My second question was, at some point, I'm simply assuming that Massachusetts will get beyond the point of these, really having licenses for destination casinos. Assuming a destination casino is built, for example, just north of Tompkins to serve the greater Boston area, would it be understandable that if the notion of a convenience casino ever developed, the perfect location would then be Fall River, wouldn't it? At the Harbor Mall? And I'm not saying that they would go into competition if you have a convenience casino. The point I'm moving up to is, we're not going to have two convenience casinos within 380 feet of each other.
So as I understand it, the Massachusetts law requires that that fourth license in the southeastern zone be a minimum of $500 million investment, which by definition would not be a convenience.
It's a destination casino. I guess the point that I was trying to make is, we're never going to see, at best it appears, that what we could look for would be destination convenience casinos, that is, what I call your casino is a convenience casino, and at least possibly a convenience casino in Massachusetts with a change, a substantial modification of the law, so that it would serve where of the southeastern Massachusetts area. But the point I guess I was trying to make is, we could have a casino, if yours isn't built, if yours is not built, we could have a convenience casino at some point in a place like Harbor Mall.
If the Commonwealth changed the law.
Okay. And I would, I don't know, did you have an opportunity by the way to go to any of the neighborhood meetings or the public hearing on the casino in Fall River?
I did not.
My impression coming away from that is that that is not, that is in no way, say, a Foxwoods-type casino that they were talking about. It was somewhere between a destination and a convenience. That was the overall impression I got when they told me that the hotel, for example, would only be two stories. So I'm assuming that even at this point, our notion of a destination casino is something more than you would actually be able to achieve in Massachusetts under the current law. That is, you wouldn't have to have a Foxwoods, but wouldn't you come close to meeting Massachusetts statutes if you, for example, tried to transfer, if you had a Twin River-type casino in Fall River? It wouldn't be far-fetched to say that that would almost meet the requirements under licenship in Massachusetts, would it?
Well, it's, again, the requirements are capital-invested requirements, so would it, would it cost more than $500 million to replicate Twin River Casino? I'm not sure. I will tell you, I'll go back to the earlier statement that I made, we have no intention of building a $500 million destination casino. My shareholders and my lenders would not allow that.
Would it be fair for me to assume, for example, and I guess this is another way of getting an answer to my question, and that's not a criticism, I'm asking poor questions, but if the Harbor Mall Casino had gone through, you wouldn't be here tonight, would you? I mean, this area can't serve two casinos.
Had the Harbor Mall Casino gone through and been in development at this point, I think we would think hard about coming to Tiverton, yes.
I think you'd think very hard about it, but okay, you've answered it.
But with that said, if there is a casino, you know, today is the day in Massachusetts for people to submit their bids for that southeastern zone license.
Well, I think you've answered my question. I think basically what you're saying is, I think what you're agreeing with is my concern, and that is, if we don't have a convenience casino in Tiverton, 380 feet from Fall River, Fall River possibly could have the casino instead, with another corporation, obviously.
I think if that was going to happen, there would have been a bid submitted this afternoon, and there wasn't.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to, I would just, would like to review the timeline. So in November, you will, 2015?
Yes.
You'll be coming to the town council with the final presentation, you believe?
Correct.
And then we need to make the decision whether it goes on the ballot. When would be the latest that we could make that decision? Are you looking for that before January of 2016?
I think the conventional wisdom from our perspective was to try to get it into the legislature's hands at the beginning of the legislative session so that they had time to vet it. You know, is there magic between November, December, January? I don't think there is, and quite frankly, there's going to be give and take in this schedule. We're going to come with something, you're going to say, I don't like, I don't like the way that looks, come back to me and tell me something else, we fully expect that. But I think that by the first part of 2016, you know, the town would probably need to say, yes, we want to have the general assembly consider it, because they've got to go through their process at that point.
Now what happens if the town council votes against it?
If you say no, it's the end of the process.
It's the end of the process.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Mr. Taylor, thank you for coming tonight and your team, and I'd also like to thank all the residents for coming out tonight also. This next year is going to be quite a learning experience for all of us, the council as well as the residents in the town. And I just hope that we go into this with an open mind and listen to what is going to be happening or could happen in the town of Tiverton. I read in the paper, I believe, that it's going to be a quarter of the size of Twin River?
Just based on the number of positions, our slot machines and tables, it would be about 25 percent of the size of the facility that we operate in Lincoln.
Okay. And over the years, in that article that I was reading, there were no major concerns with police going to the Twin River location?
Again, I think it would be, it'd be a good thing for the town to engage with their colleagues in Lincoln and in Newport, for that matter, to get firsthand from them what the experience has been. We, from our perspective, we feel we have a great working relationship, Lincoln... Lincoln is a beautiful place to live and is a beautiful place to work and we've, we've been able to, to coexist there quite, quite nicely.
Okay. That'll be all. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Prediction for the number of jobs, it was 350?
Correct.
How many jobs would add, I mean, how many currently working at Newport Grand now?
There's 160 people with licenses.
So it's a pretty good, substantial amount of people that would be hired.
Correct.
And I understand you usually try to hire local, it's, it's been a policy.
Our, our approach has been to hire local and use local vendors wherever we can. When we went to the voters in 2012 to talk to them in the town of Lincoln and statewide about expanding our product mix to include table games, we talked about the number of jobs that we would create at Twin River and the number of businesses that we would try to do business with. At that time, we had 890 employees. We said we were going to create 300 jobs and today we have over 1,600 employees. At that time, we did business with about 160 Rhode Island-based vendors at Twin River. Today, we do business with over 300. So we, we try to be as considerate to Rhode Island as we possibly can, as well as to our, you know, home community. I think we have just under 100 employees at Twin River who live in the town of Lincoln.
You know, just real quick, my father, 1950s, used to stand outside of a store up in North Tiverton and if patrol cop would come up, he'd knock on the window. You know, they were running a numbers game, they used a daily index number. This is, you know, you get paid 50 cents a day, that was, I guess, be a bit of patriarchy. We used to run lottery in Rhode Island. I think that we've come a long way in the state. People are against gambling, they don't like the reliance on gambling, things I understand, but people have done a gamble, like myself. I don't go there that often, but who are you to tell me that I can't go and have some fun at Newport Grand? It's personal choice in America. So if people want to go to this facility, and there are, I understand, clearly state organizations that help people with, you know, they get hooked on gambling, just like hooked on cigarettes or heroin or anything else. There are dollars taken out of state coffees to help people that are, so it's one people who understand that, you know, it's personal choice in America. Thank you.
Mrs. Shabbat?
Just a couple of questions. I believe you had started doing some phone surveys?
Yes, we did.
And I just recently received a questionnaire in the mail.
Yes.
Will we be privy to the results of that?
So in the phone surveys, a combination of electoral and commercials, so we won't release the phone survey in its totality, but we can poll questions related to voter feelings about this, yes. In terms of the questionnaires, we'll share back with you what we get.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of quick ones, Mr. Taylor. As councils, we receive a lot of phone calls, some are pro, some are con. A few of them that I have received are concerned that, I believe right now it's 45 acres that you're purchasing?
Yes.
Okay. Their concern is that it's going to grow and it's going to grow into a Twin River. Is that what we're looking at?
Absolutely, absolutely not. And, and part of that is the control that you all have and part of it is the control that the market will have. But, you know, one thing, if this thing were, if this thing were to get approved by the voters, the town has control over every aspect of the business, you know, the liquor license, the entertainment licenses, you know, zoning. If we want to build or move a wall, there's permits that would need to go through this. So ultimately, much like in the town of Lincoln, where we have a great collaborative relationship with the town and, you know, we don't have a thought that doesn't start in the town of Lincoln in terms of, we're thinking about this, how would you react to it? And it'd be much the same way here. The second thing is, is in terms of the market and what we could effectively build and feel comfortable building on that, on that site. So ultimately, you'll have the control over what we do or don't do on a go-forward basis, but, but be comforted by the fact that the market is going to constrain that in some way.
So you have no hope of building a hotel or motel or nothing like that?
Yeah, that's, that's something that's going to be part of the conversation that we have with the residents, but frankly, if the residents say, you know, that's a non-star for us, we wouldn't do it.
Thank you very much.
Anything from the, anything further?
If I, if I may close, when you're ready, I'm sorry.
I just, try it again.
I just want to make a comment, it's less of a question and it sort of contextualizes what conversation we're having and when we're having it. What we have been talking about tonight is, and I'm a sort of a stickler for semantics, but what we've been saying is, when and what it will look like and we have control over the operation, we are so far away from that conversation today as we sit here that it's almost uncomfortable talking about it in that context. I like the if and could pairing a little bit better because we do have this first step of understanding the scale and the scope of what is proposed that's not even proposed yet. And I think that this town council and a lot of other bodies within the town now have a duty of diligence. And so it's, you're going to be conducting your diligence, we're going to be conducting our diligence and hopefully when we meet in November, we'll be as sophisticated as each of us can be as to what, what's going to happen going forward or what's not going to happen going forward. So I think that's a more productive conversation as we start this process. That's my own, my own opinion, but it's all too easy to start spending money and start visualizing concepts and counting on jobs and growth and et cetera, et cetera. We're really not quite there yet in my opinion, but that's just my two cents. Thank you.
I would like to encourage everyone to go to these public hearings, give your opinion to Mr. Taylor. Also, call us, tell us what you want and what you want us to do because we serve you. So we have to know what the community is thinking as well as Twin River's. So I encourage you all to go to every single one of these meetings, as many as possible, come to town council meetings when they're presenting us because we want to do what you want to do. And we'll go forward that way. Mr. Taylor?
So, okay.
Mr. Taylor, when it comes to the small gatherings?
Yes.
How would you contact neighbors, neighborhoods? Would a neighborhood be able to call you if they're interested in having a meeting?
Yes. So let me, let me put some meat on the bones of the small neighborhood gatherings. In, in our minds, the best way to get candid, good feedback is to do it in, in small groups. And fortunately, people have already started to invite me into their homes and say, I'm going to get some of my neighbors over and come and talk to us. Tell us what you think, tell us, you know, what you're thinking. So one way is we're going to go out and seek those meetings. So if there's any one of your constituents that says, I'd like to have four or five of my neighbors over and have a conversation like this, let us know and we will, we will schedule something. The other thing is, is that they can, people can reach out to us. So if they want to reach out to us directly, we will, I don't know the best way to get a number and a name out to people, but...
Probably the town website would be the best place to put it.
Okay. So we'll post up, we'll post up a, you know, a name and a number for how people can reach out to schedule one of these things directly. But again, you know, we're committed to 40 or 50 of these things to try to get as much feedback in, in reaction from people as possible. That'll inform the charrettes and the workshops that we do later in September.
Any other questions? Well, I want to thank you for coming tonight. It's just the start and I understand, but a lot of people were anxious and I hope this helped everyone to kind of understand what the timeline is and to know nothing is decided yet. And that's important because people were panicking that what was going to happen very soon.
You know, thank you, thank you for the opportunity to be here and to kind of have our first opportunity to have a conversation. If I had one wish, it would be that people keep an open mind, they participate in the process and they ultimately make a decision based on full information, one way or another.
All right, well, thank you. At this point, I'd like to take a 10-minute recess and then we'll continue the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending.